Alright, good to go?
Yep.
Alright, go ahead and call the meeting to order. Good afternoon, everyone. Today is the Euclid Township Board of Supervisors Workshop for the month of October. Uh, this meeting is being livestreamed and video recorded. And we will go ahead and jump right into our business agenda for today, which is, starting with number one, review and discuss our trash survey results. Mr. Kegel?
Thank you. Uh, in January of this year, we began a new waste collection service with Whitetail disposal, and the new service was a little bit of a change, moving to an automated arm, requiring residents to pay for additional trash disposal if they exceeded, uh, what could fit in their bin, requiring the use of paper yard waste bags, and reducing bulk trash to once per month. And the, the main drivers in those changes were really cost efficiency and, um, sustainability in environmental, in being, trying to be environmentally conscious. Uh, when we made that switch, there were concerns expressed by residents, so we conducted a survey six months into the new service to gauge the levels of satisfaction. To administer the survey, we contracted with a company called Quantasoft. They're based in New Jersey. Uh, the online survey was open from the beginning of July through August fifteenth. We mailed postcards to five thousand one hundred and seventy-one households announcing the survey, and we received one thousand forty-five survey responses, which is a twenty point two percent response rate, which is exceptional. The top-level analysis from Quantasoft really showed that, uh, a few things. One, trash and recycling have a high level of overall satisfaction. There was some concern expressed about the time Whitetail starts collection, ensuring lids are closed on containers after pickup, and cleanliness and a desire for more simplistic trash and recycling process. In other words, returning to unlimited trash and recycling. Uh, two, yard waste had an overall moderate level of satisfaction. The biggest area of concern was around the yard waste bag requirements. Residents don't like having to buy the additional bags, and they don't like having to bundle the larger diameter debris. And then three, bulk trash had an overall low level of satisfaction. Residents really expressed their displeasure with only one bulk item per month, along with the need to schedule their bulk item, and have had extreme difficulty in scheduling, uh, and a higher rate of refusal from Whitetail to collect a bulk item than really ever before. In terms of numbers on a scale of one to five, trash was at a four point four six, recycling was at a four point five one, yard waste was at a four point zero six, and bulk was at a two point nine five. We asked about the satisfaction of Whitetail versus our previous provider, and by a small margin of four percent, uh, residents felt Whitetail was providing better service than our previous provider. Thirty-seven point nine percent of residents said Whitetail's service is much better or somewhat better than previous, uh, while thirty-three point nine percent said Whitetail's service is much worse or somewhat worse, while twenty-four point nine percent said the service is about the same as the previous providers. Uh, Quantasoft did note that comments were tended to skew more negative than positive, and there were more than two hundred and seventy pages of comments, which include many more negative comments than positive. The comments detailed why residents were dissatisfied. Uh, the comments highlighted that many of the problems and issues residents are dissatisfied with really relate to lifestyle issues. Many residents said they want a simple and understandable waste collection process where all of their waste is collected without hassle. Uh, they did provide positive comments about the survey and appreciated the opportunity to provide input about what Whitetail, uh, and the services that they're providing. Residents also expressed interest in enhanced bulk trash, uh, household hazardous waste, as well as electronic waste services. We shared the results with Whitetail. We sat down with them, shared the results, talked about various options to help address the concerns. Uh, just kind of want to highlight, highlight some of those conversations. Terms of trash and recycling, we reiterated the need for consistency with cleanliness and the need to ensure lids are closed. One area that Whitetail indicated residents can help with ensuring lids are closed is to make sure the bins are placed curb-side with the wheels against the curb. Uh, with that said, um, they promised to reiterate a lot of these points to their drivers on a more regular basis. Um, the, the comment about putting the bins with the wheels facing the curb, when the automated arm picks up the bin and then puts it back down, if it's oriented in that direction, the lid tends to come down, tends to close when it comes back down that way. On the yard waste front, there wasn't much that they could offer in this area. Uh, I just note that the requirement to use the paper leaf collection bags is found in our solid waste and recycling ordinance, and really has been on the books since it was first enacted in nineteen ninety-three. Um, previous providers just, it, it wasn't enforced. Previous providers kind of dealt with what, what residents put out there. Um, part of this for Whitetail is really a, a worker safety perspective, you know, keeping, keeping it all manageable to, to dispose of it. And then frankly, in terms of bulk, this is where the most discussion occurred with Whitetail. Uh, we asked about the possibility of adding another bulk trash day per month, and they were going to look into it and get back to us. We're still waiting to hear about whether that's even possible and what the cost would be in terms of adding that additional, uh, bulk trash day. They did however, uh, have a suggestion that they've done rather successfully in other municipalities as an alternative, and they, they refer to it as dumpster days. Um, this would be a designated day where residents could bring as much non-hazardous bulk trash as they want to a designated location in the township. Uh, and then, you know, Whitetail would be there staffing at the dumpsters, the rearload vehicles, and they would, um, collect all of that on that single day and then, and then dispose of it. We're still waiting for pricing from Whitetail on that service as well. We also emphasized to Whitetail that we want the default answer to be yes, and no should really be an absolute last resort. And if it needs to be no, we want them to really provide alternative options. Uh, so I'm hopeful that we'll see a positive change in that regard in terms of the ease of scheduling bulk trash, uh, for residents. As I said, we, we had a lot of, a lot of conversation around, around bulk. Uh, so with all that said, um, I just kind of see if there's any feedback that you may have, if there's any questions you have around the results or the waste collection process, or if there's, um, any areas you'd like us to further discuss with Whitetail.
I have a few comments. Um, well, uh, just going down, Melissa, you talked, um, just commenting on the lids being closed, you know, some, you know, they said about the, the, um, the curb and putting, of course, not every root has a curb, including mine. I can tell you that my, the weird thing is for me, I noticed it's the recycling bins that are always open. It's not the regular trash. They look like identical uh, containers. So I don't know if it's the truck that's different or the driver that's different, or, but it, and it's obvious that it's one, not the other to me, for my car. And when I run along the street, I can see that. So if that helps them kind of troubleshoot, then that was my observation. Um, and, and maybe it's not fixable without curbs and all. I don't know. I'll let them take care of that. So.
No, and, and the, the comment about the curbs, it's more a reference point, right? Like the wheels, the wheels should not be facing the truck.
Okay.
The wheels should be facing the house or the driveway. You know, they, they say curb-side, but really it's, it's, it's that orientation that they refer to.
In any case, I don't, I don't, just that's my feedback on that.
Uh, that's good.
The, um, you know, I'm not surprising the comments skewed negative. That's.
Need to clarify, because I don't understand actually the wheels facing the curb. Is that if the can is in the street? Or if the can is on your, you know, hell's rip, I don't know another word for it. You know, the strip of grass before the street, like, which, because then it would be opposite. You know what I'm saying? Is it in the street facing the curb or in the?
The wheels, the wheel should always be oriented facing the house.
Facing the house, okay.
I, I think that's a good way of describing it. Right, right.
Okay, so the wheels not closest to where the truck will be?
Correct.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah.
Not, not entirely surprised and comments skewed negative. That's kind of what you see these, but people don't take the time to say, you know, I love it, but, but if, so I'm, but I mean, I did want to know because the bulk trash seems to be the one that's most negative. Do we have any idea of what kind of usage we have in the bulk compare? I know obviously it's a hundred percent, almost a hundred percent for regular trash, but are we talking about thirty percent of the people are using bulk? Ten percent. I, I know that I don't, I don't ever, I was ever used both, but I'm sure other people do it a lot.
Yeah, if you give me a second, unless Julia knows the number off the top of her head, I can pull up the, the most recent.
Between one and between twenty items per month.
Okay.
Um, they give us a breakdown, Whitetail do, of items that are scheduled, and then ultimately the items that they leave up. So sometimes there's a small discrepancy where they actually picked up more items than your schedule. Um, and we've got a lot of that as an education piece around scheduling, doing these stories to basically close that gap.
Is there, is there any idea of like how many of these people are using them almost monthly or bimonthly as opposed to like, like I said, some people might have only scheduled one bulk a, a year, for instance.
Yeah, I don't, but we don't receive a break time for a house. Uh, that's not a big, because it's the scheduling and the cashing aspects. So we made the other request. I, I don't have.
I'm just, I'm just curious because if it's, if it's a pain point, but it's people who are very heavy users, then we might need to have a separate conversation about that. I, I like the idea of dumpster day. I think, I think that's a good potential solution to at least some of the problem.
Yeah, um, just looking at the August report, uh, there were two hundred and ten bulk items scheduled, two hundred and thirty bulk items collected. So that kind of gives you an idea, and, and that's out of, um, they did, in the month of August, they did fifty-one thousand six hundred and seventy-six pickups.
Okay.
So yeah.
Just one observation that I had from reading through the voluminous comments that we received. Um, I noticed that we received a lot from our HOA communities, specifically Rhonda. I felt had a significant number of comments that were put in. Could you talk a little bit about the outreach that the township did with our HOA communities and specifically with Rhonda prior to this trash contract, just so that we can kind of?
I'm gonna let Katie, uh, not to put her on the spot. I'm gonna let Katie talk about that because, um, she was intimately involved.
So, um, Dave, who is the, um, I think his name's Dave, who's head of the HOA over there, um, I started talking to him probably a year prior to our contract being up, letting him know that this was a possibility to go automated arm. And we were in contact, like emailing back and forth. He was asking questions, and some of them I couldn't answer because our con, we didn't have the contract complete. Um, but we stayed in touch, and, um, when we did get the contract with Whitetail, um, they were pretty upset because they didn't know how the pickup was going to be. So we arranged Whitetail to come and actually put the cans out. And we, they went into a court and they showed, residents got to stand out there, ask questions. Bobby was there, Tara, myself. There was, um, a driver from Whitetail, a representative from Whitetail, so they got to ask all their questions. And they seemed, other than a very small handful, most of them seemed satisfied with what we did. But I know there are still some over there because, I mean, that are unhappy. But we did make accommodations for some that couldn't, some of them old, the older people that couldn't bring the can down. Um, there are accommodations for them where they can just use the bags.
Now, the, the only, the only other thing that I want to add, one, Katie, Katie touched on and made mention of the fact that, you know, we, after the rollout, we created a reasonable accommodation process where if, um, you know, residents, residents had a physician sign off that they were unable to move a twenty-five pound trash can, that we would supply them with a year's worth of stickers for, for their trash, and Whitetail would take the bins away. They'd just be able to put curb-side the bags to dispose of them. But the, the other thing, you know, we had com, we had conversation with, with Rhonda about the fact that they have the ability under our ordinance to opt out of our trash service. Um, you know, we made that known to the HOA. The HOA wasn't thrilled about that idea, um, about having to, to get their own trash service. However, Rhonda in particular has, has the ability under our HO, or under our ordinance to contract for their own trash service. Their residents then wouldn't pay the trash, the quarterly trash fee that the township charges, and they would be responsible for their own trash collection, um, and trash disposal and recycling.
I know we have a number of HOAs in the township. Do you know roughly how many provide for their own trash services?
I mean, I can think of four, three or four off the top of my head that do. It, it is limited to HOAs with townhouse communities. So it's, it's not an HOA with a single-family development. It's specifically for townhouse communities.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments about the trash survey? Nope. Alright, we move on to number two. Thank you guys for putting that together.
Yes.
Uh, the twenty-twenty-six budget workshop.
Okay. Uh, with us are, uh, a number of our department heads that were instrumental in putting together the twenty-twenty-six draft budget, uh, as well as Sue, our treasurer, and I just want to start by thanking all of them for their hard work in this. This has not been an easy budget, uh, budget year for a variety of reasons that we'll go over. I thought we could, um, kind of start just laying out where we stand in terms of the, in terms of the budget, and then we can kind of get into the details. Ultimately, the twenty-twenty-six general fund operating budget, uh, the, where it sits currently projects an eight hundred and fifty-three thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollar deficit. So essentially eight hundred and fifty-four thousand dollar, uh, deficit. And frankly, this is primarily due to a seven hundred thousand dollar shortfall in earned income tax revenue. We do have thankfully, uh, Teresa from Keystone Collections, our EIT, uh, tax collector is here today to answer any questions that, that we may have, um, regarding that. But what I can tell you is, um, Keystone's been, been great in working with us to identify this. Back in March, Sue first identified a downward trend. Uh, and we asked for an analysis from Keystone. They noted that the January first to April, or, uh, yeah, to January first to April thirtieth collections compared to the same time period in twenty-twenty-four had decreased by about four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. It's a seventeen, almost eighteen percent decrease. And a large portion of that decrease, eighty-two point two percent, was attributed to, uh, total non-resident decrease from a single employer. Back up a little bit, the way that earned income tax collections work, and Sue's gonna, actually, I'm just gonna let Sue explain.
Alright, so earned income tax, if, obviously, when you work, hey, percent, if you work in Euclid Township, but you live in a township that also has the earned income tax, your earned income tax goes to your home municipality. Okay, so we could have a hundred people working in Euclid, but if they don't live in Euclid, their home municipality is getting the one percent. The only make, time there's a difference in that is if they lit, if somebody who works in Euclid lives in a township that does not have a one percent tax. For example, Upper Marion Township, or different township, Radnor Township, or just some of the ones, the ones, um. In that case, if they work in Euclid Township, we get the entire one percent. The one percent that we pay to Euclid is split fifty-fifty between the township and the school district. But if it is a non-resident tax, we get the entire one percent, school district gets none.
And just a note on the open space tax that was implemented at the beginning of the year, we keep all of that. So, um, but that is only assessed on residents of Euclid Township. So, uh, like I was saying, eighteen percent decrease from one-one-twenty-five to four-thirty-twenty-five. We asked Keystone for an updated analysis, and they looked at it and confirmed again that non-resident EIT was down seven hundred and sixty-six thousand six hundred and three dollars and twenty-three cents, if we want to get particular about it. Um, it's a thirty-eight point four percent decrease, and it remains to be a single, single employer related to non-resident collection. You know, uh, overall, the, that, that single employer, uh, that single employer's collections, non-resident collections were down seven hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, uh, talking in round numbers through September with, um, seventy-nine percent of that decrease being one, one key person. So that, that alone, uh, you know, a more than seven hundred thousand dollar decrease in earned income tax really set us back, uh, in terms of the twenty-twenty-six budget. We, we did ask Keystone, uh, to kind of take a look, and they're gonna see if this is even, even possible. But we want to really understand if we have any one employer and even any one person making up more than, you know, pick a percent, one percent, five percent, ten percent of our, of our EIT. Because then that's a real risk, and we need to figure out how to, how to mitigate against that, how to plan for that. So we're gonna, there, there's additional analysis on the EIT to look at, but we're down, uh, and we're down this year, and twenty-twenty-six, we're, we're budgeted to be down. Any questions on that before we kind of jump into the rest of the revenues and?
We gotta recruit a billionaire.
What's that?
We have to recruit a billionaire to move in.
Yeah, yes, we need to recruit a billionaire to move in, absolutely.
Right. We don't want to get too picky.
We think that the CEO of this one company left earlier this year, but they rehired somebody. And hoping they rehired, like, the neighbor.
Right.
So.
We'll see.
We might, you know, fingers crossed, we may see this small increase in our last quarter collections. But this was not a, an increase one year and a sudden decrease. This increased in twenty-twenty-one. It was a sharp increase in twenty-twenty-one, but there was a continuing small increase in twenty-two, twenty-three, and then twenty-four, we just had that little bit of a dip where I was worried. And then as we went on to twenty-twenty-five, we just saw that.
So, uh, with that said, I thought I'll run through kind of our revenue projections for the general fund. And, and I'll, I'll just preface this, that these are all based on an eight hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar deficit. We'll talk about expenditures, and then we'll have some discussion around, um, different ways that we can close the, close the gap. Uh, so in, in terms of building the budget, we assumed a flat, uh, flat real estate tax, you know, just to put it in perspective, right now, our real estate tax, which our general fund millage is set at point zero eight five mils, brings in a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars a year. Uh, so not a, not a whole lot there. Um, so we had, we assume that flat, uh, we up delinquent taxes by a thousand dollars that we, we'd be able to recoup about a thousand dollars more than, than we did projecting this year. Transfer taxes stayed flat at seven hundred and fifty thousand. You know, transfer taxes are tied to the economy and mortgage rates, and um, fortunately, we live in an area where houses sell, and they sell quickly, and oftentimes for a lot more than what people are asking. Although we are starting to see a little bit of a downward trend, uh, for example, September, our transfer taxes were only fifty thousand dollars, uh, which, which isn't a whole, whole lot in comparison. Uh, our EIT is down seven hundred K. We kept local services tax flat. Building permits, we increased by a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, but decreased fire inspections by five thousand dollars. Were, we will, we will likely propose, uh, in January as part of the fee schedule to increase our building permit fees. We, we want to take a little bit of a different approach to building permits. Um, in the past, we've we've looked at and budgeted for and accounted for, uh, developments coming in, and so we might, we might show a higher building permit fee next year where, you know, uh, Gray Farm is being built. Where we're, where we think it makes sense to, to shift is that one-time revenue really using that for capital, pushing that money over into capital. Because those building permits really are a one-time revenue. And yes, you can, you can certainly make the argument that, well, by those houses, then that, that, that then increases, that, that means transfer taxes. That then means additional earned income tax. But there's no real way to quantify a dollar-for-dollar figure there. Um, and so what we're really trying to do is have the steady-state building permit fees be sufficient to more or less cover the cost of the building and zoning department. Uh, and then anything that comes in above and beyond that, be able to help fund the capital project needs, and we'll get into that in a little bit. Just looking, anything else notable? Cable TV franchise fees up a little bit just based on, um, based on the current trends. Grants, you'll see an increase in grants of fifty thousand dollars. That's because we, it, it's more of an accounting, uh, but we would take, we would, we'd basically lower our expenditures on trash collection because we got a fifty thousand dollar recycling grant. Now we're showing it separately in terms of, um, in terms of revenue. Our state entitlements are, are up a little bit, um, you know, a little bit of an increase in the, in the pension, um, pension assistance that we receive from the state. But again, we're up a hundred and ninety thousand dollars because, uh, we're budgeting for the, the volunteer fire relief, uh, money. That's, that's always just been a pass-through, and we've never actually accounted for it in the budget. But that's money that the state gives us specifically for Lionville Fire Company, and then we in turn take that money and distribute it to, to the fire company. So there's a revenue side to it, and then an expenditure side to it, just actually showing it in the budget, uh, this year. General government is up a little bit by forty-five hundred in terms of revenues. Uh, our trash collection, you'll see that fifty thousand dollar reduction. Again, that's, that's because we're showing it on the revenue, up under, under grants. Miscellaneous is down, our miscellaneous revenue's down by about twenty-eight thousand dollars, and that's as a result of, um, interest, just, just expecting lower interest. interest, just expecting lower interest returns as well as our P-card rebates. We used to be able to pay for trash using the P-card. But in order to use the P-card with Whitetail, there's a 3% service charge. So, we're not able to use that and that will result in some lower revenues there. And then the other big one that you'll see there is under transfers, there's almost half a million dollar reduction in revenue. And that's just because of, we now have a dedicated open space fund. And so, that money got shifted over to the open space fund to pay the corresponding debt service on that. So, in total, our revenues are down by $804,600 is what we're looking at budget-wise there. Any questions on revenue before I jump into expenditures?
So, without the open space, we'd be talking about 1.3?
Yeah, the total anticipated revenues are, sorry, our total anticipated revenues are $13,187,000. Is what we're looking at there. Again, down by about $805,000. All right, so jumping into expenditures, administration is up 2%. That's largely driven, it assumes a salary increase of 3% increase there. Office supplies are down because we moved leases to better account for them under debt service. Our postage expenses are up due to special mailings for projects and surveys that we're anticipating and general expenses are up a little bit for employee welfare. We include survey expenses of $10,000, grant writing, and HR consultant, $50,000 and $7,500,000 respectively. Now, just note that 25% of most of the operating expenses and salary expenses in administration is then charged to the sewer fund. And recouped, there's money recouped there. And I'm just going to go through, if you have questions, stop me and I'll address that. Tax collection is down 6%. And that's generally because of the decrease on the commissions based on the decreased amount being collected for EIT. So, we pay a percentage to Keystone and that's just down 6%. Township building expenses are down 1%. One thing that I'll note is we included in this budget a $65,000 space study to really look at our use of all of our township facilities and be able to make recommendations in terms of the future for what we would need. You know, the police department is out of space and, you know, desperately in need of some renovations there. I think that there could be more efficient use of this building. And so, we included that in the budget. 25% of that is charged to the sewer fund. Police are up 4%. That includes 3.5% increase, contractual increase plus step increases for the officers to get them to that contractual, to meet the need, the requirements of the contract. It also assumes two new hires. You know, obviously, the chief and lieutenant announced their retirements at the end of January. And so, we'll anticipate some new hires there and expenses relating to that. Fire marshal is down 1% and frankly, that's largely because this year, we had the purchase of new protective equipment for the fire marshal's office and that that came out this year. Volunteer services are up on paper. It's 128%. But again, I had mentioned, we included $190,000 for the fire company relief association and that's a pass-through. So, I mentioned on the revenue side, there's $190,000 additional. And then the corresponding $190,000 on the expense side. Terms of building and zoning, Tara did great. She's down 68%. You know, that we've got the full year of a new building inspector in there. Well, I'm not sure why it's showing. Ultimately, it's because of the increased revenues on the building permits that that I think that came down, words of math error, I'm not sure which. But we have some of the operating impacts there. There's the full year of the new building inspector that we hired in September. There's the grant match in there for the zoning rewrite, which is almost $14,000. Revenue is up $150,000 on building permits and $20,000 on subdivision and zoning hearing board fees. Like I said, we'll be looking at building permit fees and fire inspection fees as well as what could be expected to help fund the capital budget. Health and human services is flat. That includes contributions to the Downingtown Library, the senior center, food bank, and outreach funds. I do have a note, Downingtown Library will be, should be coming to the October board meeting for their annual presentation. They're going to be starting a capital campaign and looking for a capital contribution. They're looking for $250,000 contribution towards their capital campaign. We did not account for that in the budget and that'll have to be a conversation at some point. Collection costs, again, assuming 5,170 units served. We're currently at 95 a quarter. To cover the anticipated expenses through 2027, that really should be at 110 a quarter. So, we'll, you know, that's a consideration. The solid waste authority, our expenses there are trending down a little bit. And frankly, I think that has to do with the change from unlimited trash to, you know, what can fit in your bin. So, it's that. Snow removal, we don't budget for snow removal. You know, salaries are already accounted for and the cost of materials is paid for through state liquid fuels. And really, what we're charging to this account is, in the event we have to bring in any subcontractors to supplement, that's charged. So, you know, you look at 2024, our actual spent was about $106,000 there. Year-to-date, this year, we've spent about $114,000, but we don't typically budget for that. Traffic signals is up a little bit by about 7%. And that's just contractual increases from signal service as well as cost of electricity and operating that. Streetlights is flat. Cost of operating the streetlights is flat. Highway maintenance is down by about 7%. And the big change there is our road superintendent, so we never, we would always budget 100% of the cost of our road superintendent in the general fund and then in practice, 50% of the road superintendent would get charged at the end of the year to the sewer fund. And so, we fix the budget to reflect what we actually do. So, that's why that is down. Stormwater management is up. And while the bulk of the expense for stormwater management is in the capital improvement plan, we did include a $95,000 expense for stormwater fee study. One of the funding options townships of the second class have is enactment of a stormwater fee based on a variety of different factors, but specifically to fund stormwater. And so, we would look to contract with a consultant to do that study. And based on our initial estimates, budgetary estimates, about $90,000, $95,000 is probably the right number. That would take about a year with a goal, you know, if that were the path forward that we decided to implement that beginning in 2027 or 2028. Parks are up by about 7%. That's as a result of budgeting for two seasonal employees. Not something that we've done before. We've always hired seasonal employees, but we didn't budget. We didn't account for them in the budget. So, we're including that. Also includes a significant rate adjustment for two parks employees who are well below where everybody else is. They've been here for a while. So, trying to address that equity. Debt service on paper, again, looks like it's down a lot and that's because the debt service originally budgeted in 2025 is actually being covered through the open space fund. That's the Rossi debt. The expenses that you'd see here for debt service is really addressed, those are the lease payments that cover our copier and our printers and then some tower space that we rent for the high-band system utilized by the police department and fire company. Intergovernmental fees are up a little, or intergovernmental expenses are up by about 1%. And that's largely from the SPCA. We have the historical commission in Parks and Rec and the EAC flat. One of the things that we're looking at is a sponsorship program to be able to cover all of our all of our community events that we do. Julie has done a great job of putting together that and so, we'll be pushing that out here shortly. We did not account for that revenue, nor did we account for any of those expenditures related to the community events. And I apologize, we should have put this in here, but we do have, and I'll make sure to get to you. We do have detail from the historical commission and the EAC. I think we're waiting on Park and Rec. In terms of specific asks, justifying kind of their asks, we give, we have budgeted $3,000 for the historical commission, $1,000 for Park and Rec, and $3,000 for the EAC. But we'll get you the detail there after this. Our insurance is up. It's really are driven by four things. One, we need to increase the employee bonds. They haven't been touched long time despite our revenues and cash on hand increasing. I'll note that a percent of the insurance costs are actually allocated to sewer fund. We have a new broker and that's a $33,000 expense to help mitigate risk and advocate on our behalf with claims and dealing with the state workers insurance fund, which covers the fire company. One of the challenges we have in terms of budgeting for insurance is the premiums from Penn Prime aren't determined until December, which is when our budget's adopted. And so, what we don't know is how much we'll get annually for our dual trust credits, our member credits, which ultimately lower our actual costs. Other employee benefits is flat. That's as a result of a court settlement years ago relating to a former police chief and his beneficiary. Transfers are up. The police MMO is expected to be $752,000. And we've got a $2,500,000 transfer to the police pension, which covers the annual administration expenses. So, that is, that's a little bit of an increase there. And then that really covers the general fund. Before I get into some of the recommendations on closing those things, I'll just touch on some of our other funds that we have. In terms of our open space fund, we estimated between $2 and $2.5 million generated. Our year-to-date actual through August 31st was just shy of 1.2 million collected. So, we're forecasting about a $1.8 million total collection in 2025. After expenditures and everything else, we're forecasting a fund balance that will roll forward next year starting at $1.2 million roughly. The only real expense that we have there is the Rossi debt service at half a million dollars. We, for next year in open space, there's the debt service. We also budgeted for a comprehensive park recreation and open space plan. And so, that includes both an anticipated grant award as well as the full expense. So, those things are budgeted there. We did not include any projections around what may happen with Lionville Station Road. So, if those things come to fruition, then, you know, we'll we'll adjust the budget accordingly for that. In terms of the EMS fund, this is a new fund that was created. Again, we instituted an EMS tax this year. We're projecting to roll forward a fund balance of $42,000. The ambulance, their ask is up just shy of about 10%. They requested $251,000 in operating and $140,000 in capital, which is a total of about $391,000. We anticipate bringing in about $460,000, $470,000. So, you know, building that fund balance, which allows for rate stabilization as the ambulancing asks increase, which is beneficial. The hydrant fund, which will be a little bit of a conversation here in a minute. You know, that is flat at basically $180,000 in expenses and roughly $180,000, $186,000 in revenues and anticipated revenues. That does include a transfer of $66,000 from the water fund, which will be a topic of conversation here in a couple of minutes. And it does also assume a hydrant fund increase of .02 mils. Currently, our hydrant fund is at .055 mils. And we knew that the water fund was depleting. And so, we did an increase for 2025. We plan to do an increase for 2026. So, this reflects that. We'll need to have a little bit of a conversation about how much of an increase that actually is. I'm going to skip the sewer fund for the moment, but come back to that in a second. State liquid fuels is, is, is looking healthy. We're, we've got about a 430, projecting about a $433,000 fund balance that will roll over estimating about 575,000 in revenue from the state. We are budgeting about 490,000 of expenses. That includes paving and what's slated to be paved. Again, we move that in-house, which is why we're able to pave a lot more than what we would have been otherwise able to. But projected for next year is Pine Creek, Foxclove, Buttle, Marionette, Carmarthen, Landoverie, Brecknock and Aberdare. So that's, that's what's kind of anticipated there. Going back to the sewer fund. Couple of weeks ago, we had a joint meeting between the board of supervisors and municipal authority. We did a rate study to, just based on anticipated costs and expenses. Kind of to see where the rates really needed to be. It is a proprietary, proprietary, I can never say the word, fund, which means all of the revenue being generated in that fund should be sufficient to cover the expenses from that fund. And, and so the rate study ultimately showed that despite the increase that the $20 a quarter increase that we did this year, that was not sufficient to cover our anticipated expenditures over the course of the next five years. They laid out three different options. One, that was a really big increase. A middle of the road increase where there were two, two increases over a two-year period. And then a third where it was phased in over three years. The, the difference was really around how much, how much we were borrowing, how much we were financing. And ultimately, I think both the board and municipal authority were more comfortable with kind of the middle of the road option. The way that the budget is currently set up, it does not include that rate increase. However, you know, realistically, we're, we're probably looking at another, another $25 a quarter increase to put in at 150 a quarter would be our recommendation. And that will, that will cover our expenses. On the sheet here, you'll see that it's, it's showing a negative balance. And that's because the sewer fund currently owes the general fund 1.8 million dollars. And that's anticipated to go up a little bit more. And so we're looking to, to slowly pay that back. So now that I kind of ran through expenditures quickly, any questions?
Is that all? Nothing else to put in there to? I have a couple of questions just regarding specific pieces of the budget that I know have been topics in years past. And specifically, I was looking in the police budget. I know that we have some capital requests at the back of this binder with information and the capital build out is definitely an ongoing piece of work. But my questions were more specific to not really seeing a specific equipment replacement category. And this might be something that we touch base on in the future, just raising that you hear are my questions here. I see that we, we budget for building maintenance, computer maintenance, whatnot. Under what category of the budget does the officer's personal equipment, like handguns and like rifles? Where do we?
Yeah. So we, we have, we have a police. We, we have like a, a police category, police use thing. It's public safety. And so we've got in 2027.
Are you looking at the capital?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. I, I meant in the regular budget. I didn't know if we, I didn't see anything relating to their personal equipment in the regular budget. Okay. So my question had to do with the capital planned expenses for 27 and 28 for the replacement of their duty handguns. I was just curious when the last time was that we replaced those or what the replacement schedule is?
Yeah, we, we show 40K for duty handgun replacements in 2029. You know, that was the result of just some conversation with the chief and trying to selfishly help cash flows in terms of, in, in terms of the capital budget. I don't know if.
Okay. And what about their more specific equipment like rifles and long gun replacement? Is that, I mean, just because I don't have a full capital plan, nor do we really have that built out. Like where are we in the expected lifespan of replacing that equipment?
Yes, the long guns are in good shape. We, we do generally replace components of the long guns for the officers that are on emergency response to specifically the upper as, as they are shooting more than anyone else. Those uppers are narrow, aware. And so we'll replace that component of the weapons. And certainly over time, we're going to replace the entirety of our long guns, but they're in good shape.
And what's the expected lifespan of the duty weapons? Like, is that a 10-year replacement, 15, like?
It is generally. Very much like to replace our duty handguns to the officers, something that might be more appropriate for folks that really use that more as a tool than, than someone who may be shooting all the time. We believe that an assessment of a different caliber handgun and a reassessment of something that we're using officers to shoot more effectively.
I mean, we can, we can certainly adjust where that sits in the capital budget. If that's something that the board wanted us to, to kind of look at. Again, you know, the, the chief had budgeted for that in 2025 because of some unanticipated expenses relating to sewer and, and whatnot. We, we pushed that a year and then in kind of putting together the capital budget this year and just looking at everything we had going on, we pushed that to 2029. But again, I think if, if we needed to move that up, we, we could figure that out.
Yeah. That, I mean, if that's something we can discuss, I, I feel like that's a long time to push, especially with already being within that 10-year timeframe. I know we're not looking for ways to increase our expenses for 2026, but I think that's an important one, not to scoot down the road too far. Had some other notes that are just kind of flagged. But you, we can go on and I'll prepare those thoughts a little more specific. So.
Okay. Just touching on, on capital. We do have a, a balanced budget for capital for 2026. That, that is put together a variety of ways that includes a, a projected beginning fund balance of 1.87 million dollars. And so using, using that, it anticipates about a million dollars in grants. And frankly, if those grants don't come in, the projects like we'll have to then have conversations about, well, do we, do we move forward with that project? Trying to figure out where the funding would come from or are we pushing it? It does include a $325,000 transfer or utilization of open space funding. Again, that 25% that we're allowed to use for, for maintenance and improvements. And then it's about $979,000 that is charged to the sewer fund for sewer specific capital expenses. We're not just charging a percentage of the capital budget to sewer, but specifically for sewer expenses. High level. So in, in terms of, in terms of sewer, or, or I guess getting into, into uses for 2026. And, and again, we, we have put together a total capital plan that over the next five years projects a 44.6 million dollar expense over, over five years. I will caveat that with, you know, 15 million of that and, and frankly, probably even more includes some construction costs that are largely placed in the budget for conversation pieces. Right? So in, and, and you heard me say this, this time last year, we included in, when we put together the five-year plan for 25 through 29, we put $15 million in 29 for, for a new township campus. Well, we pushed that a year to 2030. So now in 2030, there's a $15 million expense for a new township campus. I don't actually expect us to spend $15 million in 2030, nor are we planning for that. But you know, I look at the capital plan much as a tool for us to strategically have conversations around improvements that need to happen. And it's a, it's a facilitation tool. And so that expense, you know, will get further refined and, and whittled down to see what it is that we actually need to do. And, and ultimately how that's funded. I, I did mention that in year 2026, we are balanced. In the other four years, we're not balanced and you know, we're having conversations with our financial advisors on best how to fund those things. And that will be, that will be an ongoing conversation. Just quickly kind of running through the projected expenses in capital for 2026. You know, for sewer under building and grounds, there's the Pine Creek Pump Station refresh at 225,000. And then some planning for Rutgers Drive, that, that facility there. Road garage, the lower road garage back footers now need to be addressed. So we budgeted for that. There's, you know, boiler replacement and a bathroom renovation here at the township building, as well as retaining wall replacements. We did budget money for electric vehicle charging infrastructure here at the township building to move towards electrification of our fleet. And that's a $75,000 expense. However, a large portion of that is covered under one of those anticipated grants to, to, to cover that expense. You know, some, some window replacements that need to happen, HVAC. I'm not going to run through each of these, just noting the, the time, but you know, we'll continue with the Rossi Park development, looking at parks and rec. We have money budgeted for Shimonapek Nature Play. We did get a $100,000 grant from, 100 to 200,000 dollar grant from the county. We're waiting still to hear on some state grants for us to then be able to move forward there. Again, as a, as a conversation and, and tool, we, we started budgeting $125,000 for future trail connections. You know, you'll see that's 26, 27, 28, 29 is 125,000. And then 2030 jumps up to 1.1 million. The reason for that is the 125,000 is really design and engineering expenses that the township would, would cost, we can cover with our, our open space fund. And then we start getting into construction in 2030. You know, as, as much as I would like to be able to move fast on a lot of these things, the reality is design, engineering, it, it takes time. So what we're starting in conversations next year, we're not building until 2030 is the reality. Jones Pond, again, just budgeting $100,000 for, let's, let's come up with a plan and figure out what we're doing here and not just sit on it. And then parks, electric vehicle charging infrastructure as well. That's largely grant driven, but putting electric vehicle chargers in at the parks. We'll look at moving the $40,000 for the duty handguns out to move that closer into 2026. I know that chief has some concerns around like body cameras and some of the camera equipment that is end of life or, or we don't, is that we don't necessarily know when they're going to end of life it? You know, under sewer, we have our annual inflow and infiltration remediation program budgeted as well as some engineering costs related to the decommissioning of the Eagleview wastewater treatment plant. Under stormwater, we've got about $580,000 of expenses that relate to the Brainerd Place Basin and Brook Road pipelining projects. Technology, there's some, you know, computer replacements and server upgrades that, that need to happen. Traffic signals and road signs. We budgeted for green light go improvements there. And then we also budgeted for the Woodford Road pedestrian crossing upgrade there at Lori Circle and, and Woodford Road. Again, that's got some anticipated grant revenue. We don't get that. We'll need to have a conversation. And then vehicle and equipment replacements. You know, in terms of vehicles where we, we plan to lease all of the vehicles for 2026 that we would need to replace. So that's in there. But again, you know, overall, we're looking at about $4 million in anticipated capital expenditures for 2026. Any questions there before we jump into the piece that I've been putting off long enough?
I, I had a quick question about the police capital, just in the chance that the bill passes for local use of radar for the police. Do we have a anticipated budget impact on, if we could implement that right away in, in 2026?
Historically, this bill has.
I know. I know.
Decades upon decades, there's no information to suggest that that is going to pass. But we certainly have the ability, we're looking with the company that we currently resource, G on re outfitting. It wouldn't negate the use of the equipment that we currently have, it just has additional equipment. We have a radio device now. It's price for them. Doing it, but I'm not really manufacturing at the moment because they don't want to do that. It's skewed and skewed that it's certain.
Please, go on.
Okay. So how do we close the budget gap? We spent a lot of time talking about this and. Have a number of options to kind of lay out there and and talk through. You know, at. We we went through and we made a few changes that that ultimately got us that 854,000 budget gap number. We were at, I think, 960, 970,000. Some of the changes that we made to reduce the deficit included the road superintendent expenses, you know, sharing that with the sewer fund. We lowered just based on historical averages and projecting of of some some stability, hopefully, coming in terms of. The the force with the police department, hopefully, less officers out for for different reasons that that they're out for, whether it be maternity or parental leave or military leave, whatever it might be. So we lowered we lowered that amount a bit. And then we increased building permit fees a bit to to be able to cover those those anticipated expenses. As I said, the hydrant fund has been supplemented for years by the water fund. But the water fund now is nearly depleted, nearly depleted. We've got about $200,000 left in the water fund. And then I spoke a little bit about the the sewer fund. So. Looking to close 854,000. So here's some of the the different ideas that that we came up with. I don't know if. Maybe we maybe we'll just take one by one and talk about each one and figure out yes or no. You know, there's two special studies that I mentioned that are included in the general fund operating budget. There's a $48,750 space study and a $95,000 stormwater funding study. What we could do is we could take those two projects out of the general fund and cover them with the water fund, the the remaining amount of the water fund. And that would give us a total general fund savings of about $144,000. So that would that would help close the gap there. The pro is it reduces the general fund impact. The that the cons are we'll essentially use up the remaining water fund balance and we'll need to go from 0.055 mils where we are today to 0.125 mils. For the hydrant, for the hydrant fund. And it also doesn't allow us to program in future special studies in in other years. Ultimately, after a lot of conversation, we think that that probably makes sense to take those two special studies out of the budget and cover them with the water fund. Thoughts?
That makes sense to me.
Yeah, it makes sense to me too.
I'm prepared to accept that recommendation. I mean, we've been using the water funds in perpetuity since since it was created. And obviously, it was going to run out at some point. And I think the staff has done, not just specific to this one decision, but. You guys have presented us with a budget that doesn't have a lot of fat in it, and you have made that work for many years. And we're thankfully in a very. Good financial position because of that, but it was never going to last forever. And I think that while all of these decisions are going to be very difficult to make and not popular decisions, it's part of a growth mindset and using that money to examine. Our future expenses for open space and stormwater, I think, is is kind of in line with that vision to be more sustainable and more prepared with our capital budgeting and having a longer range financial outlook. So I support that recommendation.
Another one that we had was the anticipated revenue from trash collection is currently insufficient to cover our anticipated expenses. And so right now, we're at $95 a quarter. We could go up to 110 a quarter, which would cover our anticipated trash collection expenses through 2027. The pro is it covers our anticipated expenses through 2027, which coincides with. The end of 2027 is when our option to either extend whitetail or rebid that services. The cons are with residents already upset about trash collection, it's going to likely further agitate folks. And the need for an increase in sewer will only make this increase seem larger to a majority of the residents.
I don't know if the residents are upset about trash collection, but I think it's more of a mixed bag. But but I do think we should, the the trash collection fee should cover the trash collection costs. So I mean, it makes sense regardless of.
Is there a way to stop it? Like, if we only increased it partially for 2026 and then again in 2027?
We're still going to take up the budget deficit somewhere.
I mean, yes, right? Like. So. The we we did not, in in terms of putting all this together, we did not assume that we would be able to use. The delta between 26 and 27 to close the budget gap. So yeah, I mean, the the short answer is yes. Like, if if you wanted us to, we could do. Forget what the number is, but probably have, we'd have to figure out what exactly the number is. But we could do an increase in 26 to cover the 26 expenses. And then we'd have to do another increase in 27 to cover the 27 expenses.
I would personally rather discharge what it costs and get it over with. Think, I mean, I see the benefit, but I also feel like. It's a loss either way. Like, you you raise the rate a higher percentage to cover the cost, and that's a negative. Or. You're raising it year after year after, you know, I would rather just, we're talking not hundreds of dollars in an increase per resident. So I think, to me, it makes sense to charge what the township is being billed and cover the cost of the, I see both ways. I just, I would rather. Raise it to what it needs to cover the cost of the service.
At the end of the day, we're going to have to, like I said, we're going to have to cover the. The gap one way or another, whether it be through this particular fee or another fee or another or a cut somewhere else.
I guess.
So like, we're going to have to make our decision regardless. And I think this is a pretty straightforward one and it's a pretty good justification.
I guess the way I see it is, if we're raising it to the rates we would need them to be in 27, then theoretically, we would have more revenue than we actually spend in 26.
You are correct.
So. I don't know, I'd rather tailor it a little bit more to exactly what the expenses are.
Okay.
For for these funds, specifically trash and sewer, just they are proprietary funds?
Well, so interestingly, sewer is a proprietary fund, trash we have in the general fund. We could look at. Making Sue run out of fund numbers. Yeah. But we'll, we'll take a look at it, but it sounds like everybody's understanding that, yeah, the trash fee needs to go up. We'll figure out, we'll make some recommendations in terms of what that number is. Then the next one is. Around. Kind of the fire aspect, the cost of a part-time fire inspector is not covered by the fire inspection fees. And a large portion of the, I don't, a a portion of the position's time is spent doing fire company work. Additionally, while the fire marshal primarily is doing building inspections, there is a part of the fire marshal's time that's spent doing fire company and fire-related aspects. We could institute a fire tax to pay for both the fire inspector and fire marshal and then move the fire company's annual contribution into that, the cost of the workers' comp coverage for the fire company. If we were to do that, we'd recommend setting it the same amount as the ambulance, which is 0.3 mils. That would generate roughly $470,000. And allow us to start to build a fund balance for capital contributions to the fire company, plan for staffing and provide kind of tax rate stabilization in the future. We we have been having conversations with the fire company, you know. Five years ago, the cost of a fire engine, a standard pumper was 250, 300,000. They just ordered one, it was 1.1 million, and they're not going to see it until 2029. So. They've they've traditionally relied on their fund drive. That is, at at some point here in the near future, is going to be insufficient. And then volunteerism is down. And so. Planning for a lot of those things is beneficial. Some of the pros, it's a dedicated tax, so folks know where that money is going, helps build a fund balance for future expenses and needs. And frankly, the public is generally more understanding and tolerant of funding public safety needs than just general government. The cons is it's an additional tax, and it could have unintended impacts on the fire company fund drive, where residents will reduce or eliminate their donations to the fire company because they're then being taxed. Ultimately, our recommendation is to to implement that fire tax and move those expenses out of the general fund and kind of go from there.
Do we do we know if the ambulance had any kind of effect on their fund drive based on our tax?
Nothing noticeable or reportable from what I've understood. I don't know if I'm a little too close to the issue or not, but I I would rationalize that in my head, being some of our messaging to residents when they called about the EMS tax was, look, the EMS tax makes sure an ambulance is available to show up when you need it. Your membership to the to the ambulance is your insurance policy if, God forbid, you were to need the ambulance. The fire company, it's a little different. But I could just be too close to that, like, know, know too much of the inside baseball to.
I think I totally understand. I think people would. I don't think people emotionally see it the way you just described it. But so, but I understand what you're saying. Yep, I just wanted to know, I I didn't think we'd have that information, but it was. I, you know. I think it makes sense. I mean, I think we're going to have to have this fee in place within two or three more years regardless.
Yeah, I'm I'm in favor of pursuing the fire tax. I think it makes sense. It will make sense to residents.
I support the fire tax. I think we had the same conversation with the implementation of the EMS tax, where pulling it out of the general fund and putting it in its own specific bracket, to me, provides more transparency to the public to understand what that is going specifically towards. And I would agree that we seem to have a community that really appreciates and understands the need to fund our public safety, especially in light of the volunteer crisis that the fire service is seeing. I do want to understand a little bit better about our fire inspector position. My understanding when we created the part-time position was that that was not going to include fire company time. So I guess I would just want to understand a little bit better how many hours are being split between the two, because it's already a part-time position. And because we were putting increased emphasis on the fire inspection aspect and bringing in revenue and seeing that that is down in the budget, like, I I guess I just need a little more clarification. On how the time is being spent. Especially since we're forecasting a decreased revenue in the fire inspection sheets.
Well.
With that being, yeah, and we can touch base about that in the future. With that being said, I do recognize the need to plan for fire company staffing in the future because the volunteer crisis is only going to get worse. And that's certainly something that the board needs to be concerned about to provide for those services. So I don't want that question to be mixed up with, you know, the priority. That's also very important in a conversation that we need to continue. But from my perspective, having it in a specific tax bracket is more transparent than just having it go into our general fund for the public. And I was going to say the same thing. I think we could ask our partners in EMS how the tax might have impacted their annual donation drives to see if if that would also apply to the fire company. But I'm in favor of the staff recommendation there as well.
The next option that we had was the open space fund allows for up to 25% of the revenue raised to be used for maintenance and improvement of open space. I wouldn't suggest using the full 25%, but we could use half, 12 and a half percent of that to cover part of our park and rec budget. The pro is it reduces the general fund impact. The the cons are it supplants the general fund and it reduces the amount of funds available for future projects. So ultimately, our recommendation is not to pursue that option. If we wanted to, there is the ability of doing a dedicated park and recreation millage. But specifically around the open space fund, we wouldn't recommend doing that.
I think we, I I agree, we keep this in our back pocket if we, if we're in a situation where really dire, but I don't, I don't want to tap this if we just basically got it on promise to the people that we were going to have, like, new.
Yeah.
New things with this.
Yeah, I agree. That's for open space.
The last recommendation really around. The general fund millage. Or relating to general fund budget is a general fund millage increase. You know, the the current levy raises, I I mentioned that, about $132,000 a year. If we were to move that to 0.3 mils, that would generate roughly $470,000. You know, the pro is it generates the additional sustainable revenue. And if and when the property tax values increase, we'll recognize that growth. It also allows us additional flexibility for capital needs as the current budget really doesn't include any capital fund. Cons are it's a tax increase, and it's a tax increase that's not a targeted use tax increase. But ultimately, our recommendation would be to move from 0.085 mils to 0.3 mils. That would be our our recommendation. I I. I do just want to note that that would effectively be taking the general fund levy back to where it was in 2005. Which I think when you look at, all things considered, it's pretty remarkable that with inflation and everything else, we're going to take the general fund, we would take the general fund levy back to 2005 rates.
I mean, I'm not excited about raising taxes. It's a prophecy. At the same time, I mean, the the this, at at the level of income we get from this tax, it's it's almost insignificant, it's almost insignificant, like 120, with 132,000 is barely can do anything with that. I mean, we need, and since it's just a Sunday source, I think we have to tap, we're a very low-wage tax township compared to our neighbors. tax township compared to our neighbors and so for us, probably ours still would be way low even after we did this. I know we're, if you add it all, what we just talked about, it starts adding up to being something more significant, but, but it is what it is with our current situation.
Yeah, I'm. I, I know residents cheer every year when we say no tax increase, but I, I want to make sure we look at the whole big picture because if we raise this for, you know, this tax and that tax, make sure that we're not just raising them all and then all of a sudden we have. I know having too much money isn't a problem for us, but you know, residents are struggling to, to pay all their other bills. So I want to make sure we're cognizant of just how expensive, just going to the grocery stores.
Yeah.
Um. So if we can close the budget gap in such a way that minimizes total tax increases.
Understood.
Like, do we have to do all of these or can we just pick and choose a couple? Like, if we did all of them, is that what would, we, what we would need to close the budget gap?
Yeah.
Do all of these things? Okay.
I mean, and I, you know, maybe I'm biased, but I don't think we have a lot of places where we could cut. I mean, I guess we could push some things, but then we're starting to like, you know, push road services and things like that. It's, I don't see us doing a lot of waste activity or no waste activity, except probably when I just come in and talk to you guys and waste your time. Most ways to think we do, but um, you know, I don't yeah, if there were like a magic thing, we could just say, uh, we can, we can stop doing this. I don't. Maybe someone else knows, I don't know what we do, but like we're going to have to either increase our revenue or stop doing something we want to do.
Yeah, I guess I feel bad just because residents just voted for the open space tax and now the next year, you know, they're adjusting to that, but then now all of a sudden, bam.
I, I think that that's the product of not doing it gradually over the last, you know, since nineteen eighty-nine and that leaves us in an unfortunate position where nobody wants to be the first person that says, sorry, we can't tell you we're not raising taxes this year. But it's also an irresponsible choice to not do it for the sake of just being able to say you didn't do it. And especially, like I said before, with, with the razor-thin margins that you guys have been executing the township's business on. There's not a lot of fat to cut, there's not any fat to cut. Um, and especially with the focus over the last few years that we've put on our capital growth and our capital planning, it can't be both ways. Like, we need to start planning, not just planning what we need and what the replacement schedules are, but how it's going to be paid for and that's still a work in progress. So, you know, it's certainly not a popular choice. I think it's a responsible choice to make from this position to ensure that we have room for that growth and that we're not going to end up budgeting on a year-to-year basis with emergencies and surprises that used to be offset by a water fund or whatever else. Like, that's, that's just not a fiscally sustainable way to continue governing. And so, you know, sure, if you look at it, it's going to be a huge percentage increase in taxes. I think right now I pay more for paper towels in my family than I do on my local taxes. I mean, we laugh, but it's true. We've enjoyed very, very low taxes comparatively to our neighbors. We've been able to not, you know, start adding up these things, but that wasn't going to last forever. And again, I think to embrace a growth mindset and look to a sustainable future where we can plan for things like sewer expenses, stormwater expenses that, that we know are going to happen, this is a step that has to occur. So.
I think all we'd be doing is kicking it down like.
I agree.
Another year down the road, I don't think we can do that. I think there's been reason to talk about some of these increases, not all. Some of these increases for the last four or five years and we've had those conversations. And we've always said, no, let's, let's see if we can get by this and we've done it, but we can't do it. And, and all we would be doing is next year, having a bigger crisis on our hands because we'll be i- i- in even a worse fiscal situation and we'd have the same problems with revenue. Maybe something would be surprising, like we both, but we'd be hoping, right? And that's, that's not really great planning in my, in my opinion. Not excited about it. Also, you should use a cloth.
Yeah, get some rags. I give you some. I didn't say I buy a lot of paper towels. I just said I spend more on paper towels than I do on my local taxes.
I mean, and, and to that point, right, we will, we will certainly look at it and try to minimize particularly the general fund increase as much as we possibly can. Um. You know, and, and I don't want to get into it in, in a, in the public uh form right now, but you know, I kind of lay out that personnel really is our largest expense, six, it's sixty percent of our budget, right? Um, and our needs are only growing with, you know, need for additional police officers, additional public works laborers, none of which are accounted for in the twenty twenty-six draft budget and um frankly, none of these increases allow for those to, the, those kinds of expenses to happen. Um. There are, there are personnel things that we could do that um I want to talk with you about uh in kind of one-on-one situations. Um. None of them are things that we ultimately recommend doing. Um. But they're options, right? And, and uh, I, I think you know, one of the things that, that you've, that you've instilled in us and that um that, that we've taken to heart is you can't always just look at, at revenue increases, right? It's, it's got to be balanced. We've got to be looking at expenditure decrease as well as as well as revenue increases whenever trying to close those budget gaps. Um, and so, you know, later this week, we'll get into some of those personnel options that we can talk through. Um. But ultimately, absent those, you know, these are kind of the things that are needed to close the, close the budget gap unless Teresa's gonna, gonna magically find uh, you know, almost a million dollars for us in.
What I would say about the uh person, I know we don't want to, I'm going to get into the details of this, but um, you know, we've talked for several years where some of, you know, we've been working with a uh workforce that's probably lower than it was twenty years, fifteen years ago. Um, I, I don't, obviously, we're in a situation where maybe that twenty twenty-six is the answer, but I do think just like we plan for capital improvement, we need to start thinking about right sizing. If, if maybe we are right, but like really, do we need to add people to be able to give the bare, the minimum like acceptable service for our roads, parks, you know, I, all, you know, all the infrastructure that they're they're needed to do. And I don't want to keep um, again, like, we kind of talked about this conversation for several years now and um, maybe not, now's not the time, but I don't want to just say like, oh, that opportunity is gone. Like, we, we need to be able to not um delaying those, those, those decisions as well. And maybe we, maybe we need to decide like, wait, you know, we're going to just have to do, but I think we kind of just saying, well, we need to add someone, but not this year, not this year. And I think we've been doing that for like seven, seven years.
Um, so that's the general fund. I just want to touch on one piece uh with regard to the hydrants. Um. You know, our, our millage is currently set at point zero five five mils and um we had planned to increase it each year by point zero two mils in twenty-six, twenty-seven and twenty-eight, eventually reaching kind of that point one one five mils. Um, but the water fund's been depleted faster than anticipated uh really due to higher than expected costs relating to scanning uh files that were originally part of an ARPA project. Um. And in researching it, there's a couple of different options that we could pursue regarding how we fund our hydrants. Um. There's currently a little bit of confusion as to whether it is a tax or a special assessment. Um. And on the face of it, it doesn't really matter, but when you dig into the details, it actually does in that the tax, if it were a tax, and, and to be clear, the second-class township code allows us to do either. It allows us to either tax or it allows us to do a special assessment. Right now, um, we have it as a tax. However, we only assess that tax on those within six, six hundred feet of a fire hydrant, which smells more like a special assessment. The reason that those things are important um is there's a couple of different ways we could go about this. One, we could increase the millage um to cover our anticipated expenses, eliminate the, the reliance on the water fund, provide for rate stabilization. Um. But, but then from there, uh, we have a couple of options. One, we could eliminate the hydrant tax altogether, absorb it into the general fund and really just do a larger general fund increase, um, which would treat it truly as a tax and assess everybody uh, everybody for it or um. We could stop calling it a tax and call it an assessment. Under the second-class township code, this would allow us to charge property owners within seven hundred and eighty feet versus the current six hundred feet that we're doing um of a fire hydrant, but it, and this is the important piece in my mind, it also allows us to charge tax-exempt properties within seven hundred and eighty feet of a fire hydrant. So if we were to, if we were to truly treat it as a tax, all of our tax-paying properties would be assessed that millage and they would pay whether they're serviced by a fire hydrant or not. Versus moving to a special assessment would allow us to assess all properties within seven hundred and eighty feet regardless of whether they're a tax-paying entity or not. Think like the school district, churches and other, other tax-exempt properties. Um, regardless, it would continue to be included on property tax bills, right? So it would still be on there, it would just, just go to us. Um. We're you know, ultimately, they're, they're, we're recommending an increase on there. The question is, you know, do we do it as an annual assessment or do we do it as um? Or do we do it as a, as a tax? I think our recommendation would be to lean towards the annual assessment. Um. But open for that conversation.
Have we crunched any number, preliminary numbers on how that would affect the revenue if it was an assessment?
Yeah, it wasn't that much of a, of a change. It's, it's more of a more of an equity, you know, in terms of if you're you, if you're getting the benefit of the fire hydrant.
Right.
Paying for it versus not.
I, I, I agree with that thinking. There's quite a few um, some tax-exempt properties that very much benefit from this, so.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Um, and then we, we already touched on the sewer, on the sewer piece. Um. I mean, just, just in the, in the sake of transparency, we, we crunch the numbers a variety of different ways. Um. Looking at, re- really looking at what the overall resident impact would be um and kind of lay that out here for you. Um, you know, the, the average residential assessed value is a hundred and seventy-nine, hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which puts a fair market value at about four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Now, I think we all know, looking at home prices in Euclid Township, what they're going for, that, that, that's probably low, but that's the result of uh, you know, a, a tax assessment base year of nineteen ninety-eight. Um, because that was the last time the county did a, a tax reassessment. Um, so uh, somebody with a, a fair market value home of four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars between the tax increase, you know, a total tax increase of about a hundred and five dollars. And then when you layer on the additional trash and sewer, assuming the trash were the, the, the full amount, um, that's two hundred and sixty-five dollars a year additional in services. Um. When you're looking at probably a more reasonable assessment value, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, talking about about a six hundred thousand dollar home in the township. There, you're talking about a hundred and forty-seven dollars roughly increased, a hundred forty-six dollar tax increase. Um. And a total of about three hundred and six dollars uh total increase between tax and trash and sewer increases. You know, two hundred thousand dollar assessed home at fair market value of about four hundred and eighty-one thousand, you're looking at two hundred and seventy-seven dollars uh a year increase in what residents are paying for services.
I just want to say again, I really appreciate the work that went into these possibilities and the way that it was presented to us. Um. I know that you guys have spent a lot of time and brain power uh on this and troubleshooting every which way to close these gaps. Not just this year, but in the past, like I said, we've been operating on thin margins for a long time and none of these are easy decisions to make, but I certainly don't feel like we've left stones unturned or been um unthoughtful about the impact to residents. So there's hard decisions to be made, but uh, I appreciate the information and the thought that went into this presentation.
Second now.
Yeah. It's a lot of work and really helps us make these difficult decisions.
And I know the public sees or doesn't see this. I'm not sure there's eighteen thousand people watching right now. Um, but you know, we start the budget season publicly right now, but our staff have been grinding on these numbers year-round. And the last few years, the emphasis again that has been on our capital and forward projections, I really appreciate and again, not easy decisions, but I think ultimately the, the decisions are putting the township in a much stronger, sustainable position and are going to allow us to do some really thoughtful and important things that the public want to see in the, in our public spaces. All right, any other questions or comments?
No.
So we'll be in touch about all that.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll put that aside for now and move on to the last item in our agenda today with overview of our October ninth uh board meeting agenda.
Uh, I'll move through this pretty quickly. Um, there's uh, we're anticipating a presentation by the Downingtown Library. Uh, public hearing about a cable franchise renewal for Comcast, a number of amendments to ordinances around fire police, planning commission, inter-municipal agreements and the township manager ordinance. Uh. Some resolutions, uh, two approving local share ground, local share account grant requests, one for a milling machine and one for pedestrian upgrades at Lorry Circle and Whifford Road. We may uh waiting to hear from the lawyers have uh an intergovernmental cooperation agreement for the Westchester Regional Emergency Response Team. We'll have some appointments, the municipal authority and the environmental advisory council. Uh, contracts that will be looking to enter for municipal maintenance for pump repairs at Overlook Pump Station and then pipe repairs at the Eagleview Wastewater Treatment Plant. We may have a vehicle for a building inspector. Uh, we'll see how tomorrow goes. Um, adoption of HIPAA privacy practices and security uh policies. Uh, permission to advertise uh for Lionville Station Road, PRD ordinance and tentative plan for Lionville Preserve. And then authorization for the township solicitor to take enforcement action on uh property on Bean Creek. And then after the meeting, we'll have the conditional use hearing on the amendment to Eagleview Town Center too.
Right.
Not a long list.
Any questions or comments? Okay, any public comment? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Someone.
Second.
All in favor?